Good evening, everyone. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Patch, the Middletown Township Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the August T Minor administrative offices in each elementary, middle, and secondary school in the district. Roll call.
Mrs. Caminiti?
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Mrs. Minuise?
Here.
Mrs. Skolasky?
Here.
Mr. Soparowski?
Here.
Mr. Toad?
Mrs. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Mr. Capone?
Here. I now need a motion for executive session to speak about HIPAA and personnel matters.
So moved.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstentions. See you in a little bit.
Good evening, everyone. Please stand for the pledge. And we're also going to have a moment of silence. The district has learned of the recent passing of a former district employee, Pauline Niasse. Paula taught in the district for over 18 years before retiring from her position at Thorn Middle School in 2017. We extend our deepest sympathy to the Niasse's family.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're going to start our meeting off with Mrs. Doherty to open our board workshop.
We're going to use the workshop as an opportunity to discuss the items that are on the voting agenda for this month's meeting, starting with the business office agenda. The agenda consists of our monthly financial reports, and we also have a transportation bid award. So are there any questions or discussion on that? The award is for athletic routes and for an additional route for Communications High School.
Any questions for anyone?
No, 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 it was topic.
Okay. The next section is on the superintendent of schools consent agenda. We have our monthly HIB report, our student safety data system summary report, suspension report, home instructions, special education contracted service providers, also a field experience agreement with Eastern Washington University. We have our monthly list of professional development, additional field trip locations, and personnel.
May I have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I just, who came up with the agenda for the workshop meeting?
We just went through the, there's just a list of topics that are driven by the voting items on the agenda.
Jess, you were here when we used to have--
No, I wasn't.
You weren't?
No, I was not.
You weren't working in the district at all?
I was not a part of board meeting, Dr. Doherty.
Okay. Workshop meetings normally were workshop, it was committee meetings, learning what's going on. It's really, it's a sin because I asked to have these meetings. And, you know, just to do it in name and say you did it, and not really do it. That's what we're doing. Because this is not what a workshop meeting is about, a committee of the whole workshop meeting. It's about the people that are running those departments being here and telling us, like when we have our committee meetings at four, normally it's everybody having the same kind of a committee meeting.
There are districts that do workshop of the whole and do not have a superintendent superintendent to present--
This is just, listen, I'm gone. I'm out of here. So it's over. But this is just stroking us to get it done and saying, I did it for the next two meetings. And it's a sin because those are the people that want, they want to know what's going on. And this is a disgrace.
Could you all please speak into the microphones? Dr. Alphonse, I'm having a hard time hearing. Just please, everyone, the microphone there, so please speak into them, because we cannot hear you.
Ms. Doherty, you can continue.
Well, those were all the agenda items we went through.
Did anybody have anything to speak about, any specific--
Yes, I would like to start with facilities.
Good.
Okay, I think we need to start going through the committees and asking questions. See, and we don't have a list of things on here for facilities. Tell us, how are our buildings? Are there leaks in the roofs? Are there any major issues that we're working on? Are there any projects? Are the heating systems up? Yeah, the Linkcroft Annex. What's going on with that? Are we almost done? What's the final cost on that? But let's get into the facility first.
Sure, the Linkcroft Annex is in its final phases of completion. We're actually working, Sodan's, our contractor for the electric upgrade, is working directly with JCPenel to get the final upgrade and that service completed so that we can fully utilize both HVAC systems that were put into the building. One of them we actually have running right now on the existing system, just to have heat in the building while they're finishing up. But we have to get the other one set. We also, we're waiting for countertops, you know, but the cabinets are in, but we're just, you know, the countertops are ordered. They'll be in, I think in a couple of weeks. You know, they did the, they have to do the final template and get it ordered. The furniture's been ordered, so we're expecting that, I think, mid-December. That'll be coming in. That'll go directly into the annex. We are working on, you know, some just detailed finishing work. They're doing some more things on the outside, like with the shutters and trim work and things of that nature. So it's in its final phases at this point.
Is it, is it ready for the furniture to be delivered, or?
Yeah, the furniture can come. Yeah. Yeah, the floors are all done. The walls are all painted.
I had sent you pictures and a video. Yep, it was in my update two weeks ago.
That's fine, but it's still good to have that discussion.
Do you have a projected date as to when you think the students might be able to go in?
We're hoping a soft opening in January. Yeah. I mean, formal classes, we didn't anticipate starting until, you know, like moving the full program over there, probably until next year, to give students happier to acclimate. But we will take them over there numerous times during the second half of the full year. That's our goal.
Yeah. One of the other things that we have to also address is the parking lot, just configuring it. We're going to be working with the architect to, you know, make sure that there's room for the bus and room for all the staff parking, but--
Because it is a shared, yeah, shared parking lot.
What's that?
It is a small lot with the bus.
Like there's a shared driveway. It's going up there.
Yeah, it seems like everybody around the annex, though, has gotten the message, like that we're using it now. So, yeah. No, it's coming along really well.
Are there any projects going on in our buildings, any issues, leaks in the roofs?
I mean, there's always work orders, you know, that we address. You know, there's, you know, I don't have a list of things in front of me, but, you know, there's constant maintenance going on and things that need to be repaired. So I, you know, I will say there's not any big project going on, basically, besides the annex, but there's constant, constant maintenance.
Yeah, I get the constant maintenance, but sometimes there's issues that we're not aware of. You know, the heating, is the heating working?
Well, I mean, there's always issues with some, I mean, we have, all of our systems are aging. There's always some issue in some building that's being addressed. I don't have the specific list in front of me--
They had a boiler down at Linkcroft last week, I guess, and it was up and back and running in a couple of hours.
It was the boilers, yeah.
So it was a quick fix, whatever it was.
Like I know we reached out to Dr. Alphonse, Alphonse, with rumors about mold in the buildings, and she confirmed that there absolutely was not.
Thank you.
I want to make sure that--
Thank you for confirming that.
That's the kind of things I need to get out there because those rumors, you know, are--
No ever.
--hurtful. Yes.
No ever.
So what you're saying is, like, there's no major project that's coming out of our budget?
Well, there's, there were a few things that, I mean, I guess you could call it major. You know, we had the bleacher work that's ongoing at the two, at the two high schools. You know, that's already started and that's continuing. We are, I mean, I know we've discussed here that we will be doing some repair work on the high school south turf field in January to try to get that base smoothed out, you know, so to we can get that resolved before the next season comes along.
What was the cost that we were projecting on that?
Forty-one thousand.
Yes, good memory.
Yeah, it was, yeah, forty-one thousand. But, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to say that they're not busy. I mean, there's a lot of--
No, no, we know they're busy, but we're looking at things that are going to hit us when it comes to budget time that we spent money on that was not planned for this year.
Nothing as of now that's come up that's been new.
We're doing some floors over the winter break, you know, that were in the budget at, I think, Thompson's Cafeteria and High School North. That's either the winter break or the spring break. You know, I don't have the schedule in front of me, but I know those were in the budget. It's just, you know, nothing huge, but, you know, a few things that were in the budget we are continuing to work on.
So we're maintaining the buildings?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. We're actually, you know, starting to work on next year's budget already, so putting together projects for that.
Anything else? About facilities?
Um, about facilities, anything else?
You can move on to the finance.
I mean, I didn't prepare a report. You know, I mean, one thing I will say is we're, you know, we, we will have our odd sum for our audit filed by December 5th. That's the deadline. So we're, actually, it's already, we're already done with most of it. We're just doing our, some of our allocations. So all that work is done. You know, we have already distributed the budget manual and opened up the budget module for the district, and everybody is working on putting, starting to put that together already. Those are probably the two main things that we're working on as far as finance.
Do we have an update on strategic planning yet?
I can't hear you.
Strategic planning?
We're, Ross Haber said after Thanksgiving. That is what his last message to the district was when we reached out to him. So we're just waiting for that report. And then from there, certainly, we're going to reengage with strategic planning. We have our steering committee, who I will reach out to once we have that information.
And I think last month, I'm pretty sure last month, we voted to go out for RFP for a new auditor. Have we done that?
We haven't done that yet. I wouldn't do that until the spring because you'll appoint the auditor at the reorganization meeting in May to do the audit for the 25, '26 year. Because that work won't get done until, at the earliest, next August, September. So I would, I would recommend doing it in that timeframe, and then you can just put it on with your annual appointments when you do it in May. Because after, after we finish this, which is virtually done, we won't do anything with the auditor until next year.
I have a question regards to the budget for next year. When is the contract for the class three officers expire? The current contract?
I believe we are, I'd have to take a look at that. I think we're in the first year of a two-year extension. I'd have to take a look.
If we are not, I think we should put that out to bid. You know, there are private security companies. See if there are other bids that come in. If there are lower bids that come in, we should present that to the county and see if they would like to match in.
You know, that would be something that the board would--
I just think if it's coming up this year, we would want to get on that sooner than later since the security aspect that everybody cares about, safety.
Anything else for the finance? You want to turn to student services? Does anybody speak to student services?
Yeah, no, nothing. The major is the annex. That's the big project right now. So we are anticipating, as I said, a soft opening in January. Obviously, things are delayed. You know, construction never goes exactly as planned, but the space looks fantastic. If you hadn't seen them, I sent you some pictures in my update, some video that I went over and took. But it's going to be a great space, not only for our transition program, but certainly a space we can utilize as a district for other things. We configured it that way purposely, so that way it can get, you know, multiple types of uses. So really, that is the biggest thing that's happening in the specialized department right now.
Do we have a cost of what we spend on it so far?
We have. I don't have the, you know, all the figures in front of me. I know we had $200,000 allocated out of our budget to work on that. And I, I know that we are in that, in that range. You know, I can get more exact figures once we finish everything up.
But we stayed, it was like a project on a dime. Like, you know, we did a lot of work internally and, you know, really tried to be as cost efficient as possible--
Well, when the architect met with us and went over the plans back when we were first starting this, you know, we, we didn't do everything that was in the scope that they were proposing, but they were, you know, really talking more in the million dollar range, you know, to do all this work. And, you know, there's some things that we, we didn't do. They were talking about bumping out part of it for a more enhanced entryway and so forth. But, you know, we've accomplished, you know, virtually, you know, everything that was in that scope, except for actually bumping the building out a little bit. And, you know, at, like we said, at a lower cost. It's been a lot of internal work, and that does take resources, you know, that we have in the district, and we're dedicating it toward that, and then we're trying to catch up on other things as well. But, you know, if you, like, if you put this out to bid, it would have been a lot more expensive to have a contractor come in to do it.
Well, that's my point. I think we owe a big thank you to our staff because, from what I understand, they've done jobs that are not in their job descriptions and--
They've learned a lot.
Were able to use their talents that they have to produce a great building.
I'm telling you, that ceiling looks amazing, and the floor looks amazing.
The floor?
Yeah, the floor and the ceiling are just phenomenal.
But I'd like to thank them for that because I heard they did a really good job.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I still would like to go over and see it one day.
Well, everybody can go over and see it, you know, pretty soon. So. We got new appliances for it, too. They came in their own stall.
Didn't we have something like a sensory expert or something that came in that was making sure of this very, like, bad painting?
We did talk to the architect, and actually Adam knows, you know, a lot about that, too. And, you know, for example, the lighting was programmed, you know, to be favorable to that type of environment.
They had experts in it, actually, yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Anything else on this?
I can also say, from the perspective of Middletown Friends of Diverse Learners, the meetings with Jennifer Granger have been going really well, addressing issues and coming up with some really good programming for the new year in 2026. So there will be more to come on that.
And I think them, too, as people are reaching out to us, I think it has helped that we have directed them to the chain of command and have tried to address it ourselves because the parents are finding out that things are getting done a lot quicker.
Yes.
If they get directed right to the right source.
Yes, yeah. We've been able to remedy some things very quickly before it takes a life of its own.
Any co-curricular technologies to speak of, or?
Nothing. No. Curriculum, I have two things that I can share. The homework committee met again on our recent professional development day because we are looking at restructuring our homework policy in the district to create consistency and expectation across the board at the varying levels, K to two, three to five, middle school and high school. They have a draft that they just shared with me, and we'll be reviewing that and taking a look at that and putting together some policy amendments for the board to consider. So that will be a really good thing because we've heard over time, most often, the inconsistency with the homework and also particularly in regards to the length of time at each grade level. So we're hoping that this will help provide some parameters and expectations across the district. The other thing that we are looking at is it's time for us to just do an evaluation of our middle school and high school schedules. That does not mean anything is changing. It's just typical practice in taking a look at, do our time parameters still serve our students, serve the best interests of our students based on the courses we offer and the dynamics of what a student today needs. You know, evaluating the advisory blocks at both the middle school and the high school, the alternation of the AV schedule, which we know students love because it helps them offset their workload. But all of those will come into conversation, and certainly, we're going to be engaging with our principals and our supervisors and also teaching staff members and students at both of those levels to get some information and feedback on the-- and students at both of those levels to get some information and feedback on the current schedules to see if there's any slight adjustments that we should be considering. So, it's just, every five to six years, you'll like to take a look at that.
And theoretically, this would be to go in place for September of 2026?
Potentially, it depends on, it depends on what it would be. Obviously, smaller things are more doable in a short-term turnaround versus something that's like a major overhaul. I don't anticipate there being a need for a major overhaul, you know, most middle schools tend to run at a 60-ish minute because it's developmentally appropriate period. Our high schools are at 80 minutes, there is debate on whether, on whether that's too long of a time period because there is a, an art to teaching in that 80-minute block, so that you're maximizing instructional time. We did get some feedback that some of our high schoolers believe that the 80 minutes is too long, but then there are others in some of our higher-level courses such as our AP courses or our science, really, science labs, where they feel like the 80 minutes is appropriate. So, you know, really just depends on what the recommendations for changes, if any, and how, you know, quickly we can turn those around.
Couldn't it be just also that, like, they want the more time for the labs, that they might be able to reduce the 80 minutes in some classes, but in labs, keep it at 80?
Yeah, yeah, you might be able to, you know, I know also, office hours and advisory has been, open block has been a subject, a topic of conversation over the last several years, and are we getting the value out of it for what it was put in the schedule for, particularly at the middle school level, where advisory becomes more of a challenge because it is very student-directed and, you know, middle schoolers need more guidance than, than our high schoolers would, so things like that we'll start to think about, but, you know, there is the possibility of having some of those lab-based classes maybe having an extended time block or buddying them up to a piece of another period. It just depends because we're also bound by the contract minutes. So it becomes a, a big puzzle to, to really have to solve and then meet the instructional minutes that are mandated in some of our courses like health and physical education.
Okay, good. Any more questions?
I just, in terms of curriculum, I think we should send a survey out to the parents about iReady and see what the parents' feedback on it is, because I know personally, I get a lot of feedback about it saying, what can you do to get rid of iReady? I recently had a meeting with one of my child's teachers and it was expressed to me that in their child, in their district, that they're, she doesn't want her own child to use iReady. So I just think it would be interesting to hear what the parents' feedback is because we hear a lot from this side that says it's great, everybody loves it, and then I hear from parents, I don't want my kindergarteners spending time on it. Just an idea.
Yeah, yeah, I'll discuss it with Mr. Cullen, but I think there's value in getting that feedback. We are, you know, obviously, iReady is one of the more costlier platforms that we pay for, there are potential other alternatives where we might be able to mitigate some of that cost and maybe minimize the amount of time that kids are spending. We do, I will say, we do need a benchmarking system, so whatever route we choose to go in the future, there will still be a need for us to do some kind of benchmarking.
Even just getting kindergarteners back to doing it on a piece of paper.
Correct.
Because I can say, my own child never used a computer, then he was thrown in front of a computer and told to do iReady and stare at it.
Right, yeah, and developmentally...
Give it to him on a, on a handout or a dev...
Right. Yeah, those things could come into, into play, so, yeah.
I think we heard a lot of feedback through at the superintendent, saying that...
Yeah, and that really prompted us to say, like, all right, well, maybe this isn't the, maybe this isn't as engaging of a platform for students as, you know, staff gets a lot of benefit out of it in the sense of the data that it produces, but, you know, we have to start to take that feedback that our kids are giving us.
Do we pay extra for the at-home usage of it too?
You pay for the path, the My Pathway, which is like the actual, like, lessons that are aligned to the students' abilities and a separate cost for the benchmarking, so you can split those. And there are other programs that do that as well, so.
Is there any kind of feedback on how many people are actually using it at home? Or statistics on?
Well, it's, the, the usage is driven by what the teachers are really requiring students to do because there is research that backs the amount of time required to spend in order to see benefits. So it's not that kids are going home and just doing it open-endedly, like, on their own, they're being assigned that either through their, their school day or as an extension of the school day.
Okay, good.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, if we move on?
Yes, I wanna talk about, it's something with co-curricular that came across to me. Jess, are we thinking or is anything going on as far as having two athletic directors?
No.
Because that's the word out there.
No, we, we don't even have, we have one athletic director right now who has not resigned, as far as I know, or retired. In the future, if he does resign or retire, we would look to refill his position.
But not with two people, hopefully?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because I, because the way you didn't know about, like, our committee, meetings and the whole like this, we had two athletic directors going back around 16 years ago, maybe 18 years, I don't know, but it doesn't work out. The equity in the town, what it does to this town, it, it really will put a division between the town. It doesn't work out.
Okay, yeah, no, I mean, there's, there's, we really had no discussions on the topic at all, so there's no plan in place.
Somebody put something out there because the community, there is a buzz out there. But okay, I'm glad it's being discussed now because hopefully that puts it away.
Yeah.
Anything else to discuss? All right, now I'm gonna open the microphone up for public comment on the agenda.
Wait, when's our policy?
We don't have any updates.
Well, can we get an update on the last policy meeting because when I asked, I was told I would find out the next month, it's been two months. What was discussed at the last policy?
Really, we just reviewed the suggestions that were put forth by a community member and weighed it against the current policy, but no decisions were made, nothing went further than that. So this, the current policy still remains in place regarding school closure.
So there was no direction given on what to do?
Nope.
Okay, now opening the microphone up for public comment on agenda items only. If you'd like to take, if you'd like to make a statement, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Agenda items only, what does that mean for this meeting?
On the regular agenda?
It's the same thing, we always have agenda items before the voting meeting and then we have another session at the end of any items.
Okay, so what about anything related to anything that you said as far as the workshop meeting went? When does that happen?
At the end.
At the end.
At the end?
Because it's not a voting item.
Okay.
Unless it, unless it was something that was discussed at the workshop meeting that's gonna be voted on.
Okay, I'll come back to it.
I didn't, I didn't understand, thank you.
Would anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Scott McKerson, Middletown resident. So I just wanna speak to the workshop meeting that was held, thank you so much for, for having it, we, we do appreciate it. I know it was a little bit of a push from some of us to get this to happen, and I know at the beginning, there was some tension, we could feel it, we, some of us were discussing it back here, but once there was conversation, once you started speaking, the tension just eased, and we actually learned some valuable information about what's going on in the district. So I would encourage everyone to have an open mind to keeping this format and, like, let's get a date for December so we can do this again. Maybe we could do it at a separate meeting, and that way, there's time for, you know, thought and reflection on what's discussed at workshop meeting if it comes up for a vote at the voting meeting. But just thank you for, for actually, you know, engaging with us, following the vote that you took last month to do this. And again, I know it's, it's, it's tight, like, I get it, there's 30 days, you gotta figure out a date, there's at least, at least 11 people that have to be here, if not more, and I just wanna, you know, encourage more communication amongst yourselves to come up with a date in December, and I'll help you do it. I did it this time, finding a date, I'll, I'll do it again, if you wanna reach out to me and I'll coordinate a date, I don't mind doing that. Just my point is that it, it really is helpful and it's beneficial to all of us to know what's going on within the community, that's all we really wanna know, so thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a comment on agenda items only? Seeing it all moving forward, I'm gonna close the public comment and move on. We're now gonna go into our report for the Dr. Alphone Superintendent Report.
So I just have two brief things.
I'm sorry, one second. We are now going into our regular scheduled voting meeting. Dr. Alphone.
Okay, just two things. The first thing, I just wanna remind everybody that we have our Thanksgiving game this coming Thursday, big event in town, North versus South, it will be here at High School North. We announce all of the seniors that are involved in the football and band programs and the cheerleading programs in both high schools, so please come out and support, that usually kicks off about 9:15, 9:20-ish, with the game beginning a little bit after 10:30. So it is a good event, it's supposed to be cold, it will also be streamed, there is a link on the website if anybody wishes to watch it from the comfort of their home, that is Thursday. And I just wanna take this opportunity to wish everybody a wonderful Thanksgiving with family and friends. We have an early, early release tomorrow and then we return to school on Monday, and then it's a, a short bit until we get to the winter break. So thank you for all of the support and certainly have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you, Dr. Alphone. Now moving on, I need a motion to approve the meeting minutes from executive session minutes from October 28, 2025, and the workshop regular voting meeting minutes from October 28, 2025, eight A and B.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstentions. And a motion to approve nine business office consent agenda, nine A through E.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
I would like to vote no on...
One second, ma'am. All in favor? Aye. Oppose?
Oppose.
Oppose.
On.
I oppose on the bills for the Weiner law group.
I'm sorry?
You know what number that is, or?
It's D. One, two, three, four, five, I guess.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch all of that.
He's opposing the Weiner law groups.
D, oh, list.
D, D five.
Okay, on the bills list.
I am also opposing Weiner, but I am also opposing Paduas.
So four, five for Leonora.
And I'm gonna abstain.
And I'm gonna vote no on Padua and no on...
I'm sorry, Mr. Fitzgerald, you're abstaining on what exactly?
On the Weiner law.
Okay.
Let me make sure we get this. Okay.
I'm voting no on Padua and Weiner law group.
Okay, abstentions? Joe.
Joe abstaining.
All right.
From Weiner only.
And a motion to approve recommendation of superintendent of schools consent agenda 10A?
So moved?
Through I, oh, hold on, 10A through...
A, B, and C?
Let me try.
What are you doing, which is it?
Mark? Leonora?
And Jamie.
And Joan, did you vote no on Weiner too?
Yep.
Yeah, so three months on Weiner and Joe abstaining.
Jamie, did you get that?
Yeah, yeah, Leonora was a no on both.
On Weiner and...
Right, and I got the rest, yeah.
All right, I need a motion to approve consent agenda 10A through H, A through H only.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose?
I'm abstaining, oh, okay.
Abstentions.
On A.
I am voting no on fountains and yes on unfountains.
For letter A.
Okay, I need a motion to approve 10I, one through 11, and 13 through 17. This is excluding 12.
So moved? Excluding what?
12.
Second.
Did someone make that motion?
So moved?
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstentions. And a motion to approve 10I, 12.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? Amy Rokol.
Mrs. Caminiti?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Minoues?
Yes.
Mrs. Skolasky?
Yes.
Mr. Soprowski?
Yes.
Mr. Tolt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Capone?
Yes, congratulations, Mr. Bergen. Okay, now moving on to old business, does anybody have any old business?
Um, yes. Can we come up with a date for the workshop meeting?
We have...
For, for December.
December 16.
No, that was, that's the board, that's the actual meeting. That's the actual meeting.
Have we done that thing before?
So we can tie these in the week of the ninth?
December 9th.
We have to be late in that week because we have to...
You know, the only thing to keep in mind, Amy's not gonna have all the bills for that meeting, but we can still have something.
Committee, so we do have the bills.
There's, um...
I'm good on the ninth.
The ninth is good, I'm good on the ninth.
Deb?
I can do the 11th.
The ninth is good for me.
I can do that.
Good.
I can't really do the ninth, unfortunately.
The 10?
Can't do the 10.
10 you can't do?
I can't do the 10.
No, well, we can't do the 10 because we have something for turning.
I can do the 11th.
Okay, we did the 11th earlier.
Yeah, I can't do the 11th in the evening either.
How many people can't do the 9th?
One.
Can anybody do the 8th?
I can be, I'll be late.
For which one?
On the 9th.
So then why don't we start the 9th at 6:30 or 7? Is that good? 6:30?
6:30?
6:30 on the 9th.
Yeah, I'll be...
Okay, well, sunshine.
So we can start at 7?
I mean, if we could, if 6:30, we definitely need to...
If I, we could start at 7, that I can definitely do.
Okay, so do it for 7.
I thought it's 7.
Yeah. I thought it was a problem for 5:30, so obviously...
Yeah, I thought you were going, trying to...
No, no, no.
Okay.
All righty, uh, any more old business, or can we go to new business?
I have new business. Being the, um, North-South football game is Thursday, I would like to make a motion to let Leonora do the coin toss because she has been on co-curricular for 18 years and I think it would be an honor to let her do it this year. That's my motion. Got it, second?
Uh, seconded?
Uh, Deb, seconded.
Okay. You want a roll call?
Um, discussion? The only thing I can say is, Leonora, you're probably gonna be there with the mayor also because I believe Rich Carroll already reached out to him, so I have no problem with you being there.
But you know what, I have to say to that, I'm sure the mayor won't mind letting Leonora do this, being it is a board of ed function, and he knows, he's very big on volunteerism. Leonora has dedicated 18 years, so there's no reason why she can't...
And all I just said was just understand that Rich already reached out to him, so obviously, two of them will be there.
I'm sure he'll understand that Leonora could do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
But we have to vote on it.
I don't think anybody's gonna vote no for Leonora being there, no, not at all. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstentions.
How big of a coin should we get? Big one, real big.
Any more, uh... Any more...
Yes, I do. I would like to thank Tara Mahoney from High School North. She has dedicated 32 years to the North plays. And she stepped down this year. And I wasn't really aware of that until the other night. But I really would like to thank her because she was a big part of making the productions here at North successful, engaging our senior citizens to come into our buildings, watch our student plays. And I don't think we would be where we are today without her. So I'd just like to send out a big thank you to her. And I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I hope to see everybody at the game.
Alrighty. Does anybody else have any new business? Right, moving on to public comment. If you wish to make a comment, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Kristen Rooney, Middletown. I guess, I think I just wanted to get it on the record, what had to happen for us to get here. We know that you all voted in the last meeting to have a meeting like this. And when we all followed up to find out when it was going to happen, eventually we heard it's not going to happen because there's no quorum. We can't find a date. So that led a bunch of parents to over- emails to find out, well, what actually happened because we know you're all going to leave here and communicate via email about what dates you're available. And after reading all of those emails, it appeared that there were multiple dates that were possible where a quorum was available. So we wrote a letter and asked for this to happen. And then, by the way, never got a response to the letter that was addressed to Mr. Capone. But we learned that there would be a meeting tonight. So we appreciate, while we appreciate there is a meeting tonight, we don't appreciate having to do all this extra work to get what you all committed yourselves to do. And you ran for this position to do this job. So we're tired of having to do that. Then we get here, and I don't know if you saw the agenda before tonight, but it appears that it did feel tense at the beginning and that no one knew what to talk about or what to do. And I think we all thought that a workshop meeting and a committee of the whole means that you're going to discuss here the things that normally would be discussed in your small, private committee meetings. So while maybe this is the first one and you weren't going to discuss every committee tonight, and I'm guessing you don't discuss every committee on an ongoing basis, it's kind of surprising that that wasn't what was happening. It's also kind of surprising that Amy had to make every committee update when the finance committee, the facilities committee, at least have a president of the committee, who's also Mr. Capone. So I'm confused about why Amy appears to be making every update and everyone's asking her for all the information when your committees are supposed to be running this. I mean, this is a huge school district. And we are coming up upon the budget meeting, and there was little to no update from the finance or facilities committee at a time when all we hear is that the buildings are crumbling. And, you know, what are we going to do about the budget? So it's concerning that there wasn't more discussion or that there isn't more. And I don't know if you talked before you got here about those things in smaller groups because I know you're allowed to do that. But in a school district this size to have a meeting like that where you were supposed to discuss everything, be that short, I continue to be concerned. And I continue to see a lack of leadership here because...
That's three minutes, Ms. Rooney.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Capone.
Would anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Emily Donahue, Middletown resident. I'll follow up. There continues to be a lack of leadership here at the Board, which is extremely disappointing. I want to piggyback on what she said. One of the biggest disappointments is the fact that you all came here tonight to have committee meetings. It was kind of a show. It was really embarrassing. I was really hopeful to come here tonight and actually see some progress. I've actually seen the committee meetings minutes, so I'm not surprised the fact that it was like this tonight because they're not true meetings. So I hope moving forward, the fact that we start to see that, the public needs it. We deserve it. I also just want to point out the fact that you all know Open Public Meetings Act actually requires you guys to have these discussions in the public when it's not supposed to be an executive session. So things like behavior study that has been told, the fact that you guys are going to see it first, that's a problem. And so I hope you guys know the fact that things like that, the public absolutely has to be a part of. So it has to stop now. We all have been through a lot this past year. I want to thank the people that are standing up and doing the right thing. I'm sad to see some of them go, but I hope the fact that you guys can come together as a Board with our admin support and actually make some progress because this has to stop. So just remember, you guys actually have to follow the rules, and open public meetings need to start happening immediately.
Wish to make a public comment?
Hi, Katie Littlepage, Middletown. Just following up with what Emily said. We're trying to be more engaged. I think you've heard all year that we're trying to be more engaged as the public who pays for this school district. We're all here because we all pay our hard-working dollars toward this school district. And so it is frustrating when we do make time in our day to be here that we are listening to very vague responses. I don't know if it's necessarily one person's fault for these vague responses, but it's just really frustrating when we're here to learn the answers. And we get these answers that are, "I'm not sure. I don't have it in front of me." And I also, I agree. I don't think that it should all fall on Ms. Doherty. It is confusing and concerning that she's the only one that speaks for all of the committees when we have nine board members. And so in an effort to stay engaged and be transparent, because I've been here pretty much month after month, and I hear some really great questions that are raised by people up here on the Board and really great questions raised by people out here. And then I come back next month and I feel like they don't come up again. For example, Mr. Soprowski, I remember you raised that we need to do a superintendent's review, and I don't know what happened to that. And so I, that's just one example. But I'm wondering, just as a member of the public, as a taxpayer here, is it possible that when a question is raised on the Board or by the public that somebody would be able to put that question up on the screen here? Because I know we've done like PowerPoint presentations, right? And then the answer could also be typed underneath because I feel like that would help, especially, you know, if we have people here who might be like hard of hearing, they could see it up there. And then also, could those questions and answers be posted then to the website so that the public is able to see the information clearly and not rely on the poor audio quality of the microphones? And then also, if the answer is, "We don't know," to write, "We don't know," and then to write the date that we're going to know, and whether that's going to be in two weeks and then post it on the website or whether that's going to be at the next board meeting. Is that something that could happen?
Seems possible. I think the administration has to set that up and figure logistics out, but that seems possible.
Okay. Is that something? Sorry.
Yeah, yeah. We're actually recording the meeting. I sent, if you looked at my last month's, if you looked at my last month's community update, there was a set of notes from last board meeting, which was actually a recording of the meeting annotated through an artificial intelligence app, which is great. Obviously, we review it before it goes out to the public to make sure it's accurate. But we plan on doing that monthly so that people have a transcript of the meeting at their fingertips.
Okay. That's great. Would it be possible, my suggestion, so people can see it in real time and for it to be posted so it's a little bit easier? I mean, the transcript, I think, is a wonderful start. I think the idea of having a question answered very clearly in real time, somebody with the laptop putting it up there and then posting it that night just so people can see what was raised and then we can have a document to refer to for the next meeting. Is that something that somebody could motion right now or is it something...
We would have to logistically try to figure that out. It's not as simple as it sounds because we would have to have somebody recording that stuff and we would have to have somebody outside of the meeting probably taking that, which means we'd have to bring another employee back at night to do that. So give us some time. We'll investigate it. I definitely think there's value and we could probably post the questions on the website, but we might need some time to get that up after the meeting because we will have it from the transcript.
And we usually have it out on that Friday, so if we do it on Tuesday, usually by Friday she puts it in the report, so it's out.
Just another thing we did in the past was if there was questions asked and not answered, they were put on the next month's agenda to be answered at the workshop meeting. If I can make a suggestion, maybe at the end of the meeting, just like submitting questions to us on Haber. That way, we can make sure that it's followed up and posted on the next agenda or personally directed to you at the next meeting.
I think that's always a good idea. If you ask a question that we haven't given an answer to, to follow up with an email. So that way, we have a written record of it and that way, we don't, you know, nothing gets lost in the shuffle. I think that's probably a good strategy. If you are going to ask a question that you didn't get a direct answer to, so it doesn't appear on the transcript, if you could just follow up with an email, that would be helpful as well. So we're double-checking on both ends.
It would be great on your business agenda for the next month.
Yeah, that's my point. It's not my questions. It's, I want to keep all of the great questions that are raised by the Board and also by the public in conversations so they're not dropped month to month.
Well, what we could do is just pull them out of the transcript and put them into old business. Because we have a transcript which will record, which is recording all the questions from the public and the Board.
Okay.
So we can just drop them into old business.
That'll, we'll be able to see that in December.
Yes.
So I plan on getting my update for November out the first week in December, only because of the holiday week. So it will be out in the beginning of the week, Monday, December 1st. We'll get it out ASAP for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Rebecca Lara, Middletown resident. So I understand that the strategic planning report will not be made public. Do we have a timeframe on when we can expect that?
We said, Mr. Haber has told us that after Thanksgiving, he will have that report back to the district. He has not given us a definitive date. We check in with him weekly, and that was the latest update that we received. But the public will be getting a presentation on that report.
Okay, so do you, do you know, once you have it, you're expecting a couple of weeks?
I don't know because I don't know when we're getting it. It just, and we're coming up on another holiday, we're hoping, before the winter break, but I can't guarantee that.
Okay. I'm just, I'm hopeful that it won't turn into what it seemed like last year where it was very last minute and everyone was very surprised. So I'm hopeful that that won't repeat.
We are hoping it doesn't either. And we have, this man thinks I'm hounding him at this point for the report. So, you know, our goal is to get this done in a timely manner. And we engaged with him last year at the end of the year. So it has taken this long because we are, we do have a lot of complexities in the district. But I think we're nearing the time where we're going to get something back, as he has, as he has expressed to me.
Okay, fair. Forgive me if I, if I just don't know exactly how some things work. But my next question is, I've noticed that some bills are voted no. And I'm wondering why. Can we have explanations for why some board members decide to vote no?
Could you be specific on what you mean by tonight or anytime?
Yeah, tonight. So there were a handful of bills. I think it was Weiner Law and...
I can't, I can't speak to that. Some board members feel opposed to it actually and don't want to vote yes or no.
Okay. Okay. Interesting. Okay. So that's, it's just individual preferences?
Every, every, there's nine people who are on this board, nine people have their own individual vote, yes or no, or they can abstain.
Okay. Just interesting that there's no discussion. Okay, and then I am wondering for January, there's usually an LRIG. I think I'm getting the acronym right. It's LRIG. It's for recreational grants from the state of New Jersey for...
The playground grant.
The playground grant.
Correct.
I, I haven't seen it be released yet, but I understand that it's usually due at the end of January, early February. I'm wondering who works on that in the district and if I could help work on that with them.
So it goes typically through the facilities committee because it is a facilities component, and our business office and Mrs. Doherty with the facilities committee will work on that.
Okay. All right. So then I could, if I, questions and everything, I can email?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Erin Torres, Middletown. I just have a question going back to the questions. Would it be possible, rather than worrying about email and transcripts and back and forth, could we have a running list that is of the questions not answered, kept by someone up here, the secretary of some sort? And that if people have a question that wasn't answered, they can confirm at the end of the meeting? Rather than going back and forth and worrying about emails, transcripts, and just making it more confused, we just have a more direct list of questions that were raised and not answered?
We can do that. It's, I guess, maybe... We'll figure it out logistically, but we'll bullet point that and we'll take it down and we'll get back to that question.
Okay. Would we be able to put that in the beginning of the next meeting's agenda or before public comments? So we know what to expect?
That's what we were saying. We'll put that into the next meeting's old business.
So that's where it's going to go?
Correct.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Hi, Kristen Boldum, Middletown resident. Do you know when the calendar for next year is going to be available?
That doesn't...
Calendar committee does not convene typically till January? Yeah, and then we usually try to get it onto the February agenda.
Uh, second question. How many lawsuits are we entitled with currently?
Two.
Just two? And then how many for the year? Do we know to date?
Three.
And is that like typical on average year over year?
For our side, it's... It's very low.
Okay, thank you.
Would anyone else wish to make a public comment? Seeing who wants to step in forward, wish to close a public comment?
Hi, Kristen Rooney, Middletown. Just, I guess I want to get an idea for all of us. Since the first preliminary budget's presented in March, when does that, if we're doing committee of the whole, or will there be any special meetings that are related to the budget ahead of that?
We'll do budget presentations leading up to the March meeting. We're going to go back to the public presentations...
Okay.
As we used to do in the past.
Okay, so when does that?
Well, we have started the budget process, so I'm thinking, what do you, January and February, Amy? Usually?
Yeah, we could do that.
How long will it be without Amy?
Yeah, later in January, though. Like, the second half of January.
Like at our, at our voting meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so at the, so not the next meeting, at the January meeting?
The end of the month, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Hey, seeing who else wishes to adjourn the meeting? Motion to approve? Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstentions?